The meeting of the planning board Borough of Somerville for September 28th, 2022 will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided that a couple copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, two mailed fax or emailed to the Courier News, and three given to the clerk administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the deform appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call, please. Deidre Rosensky.
Here.
Dennis Sullivan.
Here.
Randall Brady.
Here.
Andrea Dare.
Here.
Art Akins.
Here.
Jason Craske.
Here.
Al Keresis.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Warren, our newest member of the lobby president. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we have the approval of the minutes from 8:10.
I have to make a change.
You want to bump the high school effect? Sure. Okay, we're gonna rearrange schedule a bit and hear from Somerville High School turf field replacement and related work presentation. Just for the public, this is a courtesy review.
Which means that the application being presented is in force. There's no formal vote, but there can be a vote on any recommendations that you made to the applicant in connection with the proposal.
With their recommendation.
They are only recommendations.
No, no, not for me. How is Andrew Cleveland?
Any things to Tony and the FPHD architects?
Are you the only one who's been testifying?
Uh, the engineer as well. That kind of remember the engineer.
Okay, so why don't we swear you do it then at the same time? Swear the testimony about to give us board the truth, the whole truth, and up above the truth. Thank you. Great. So, so what's your name again?
Uh, Daniel Schittton.
Who's that?
S.C.H.I.T.T.O.N.
Your name?
Beth B.E.D.H. Kenrdine, K.E.N.D.E.R.D.I.N.E.
I testified before this board about a year ago for another P O D project. Credentials and all of them?
Yeah, please, why don't we get that before we qualify it?
I hold degree in architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology, licensed in the state of New Jersey, my license is current. A member of the National Council on Architectural Administration Board and construction specifications to and a need of regular professional.
You know, those credentials, great.
Thank you. The application I received before you, I'm gonna turn it over to Beth a minute, was already submitted as part of education for their review. Just so everyone's aware, and the S C U can still have this as well for application. It's a turf field replacement on the so-called carpet layer, not the under drain, and we have some modifications to the sidewalk around as well. Sidewalk modification in retaining wall, you see where part of the district complained to have noticed that during certain heavy rainstorms, water would shed across and puddle down on sidewalk, so we want to handle any safety or icing issues. So that's part of why you see that in the place as well. And for the specifics of the, there's a letter issued by the planning department referring to September 8th, the Borough Engineer. This man may want to address all those comments.
Can you slide the, the eagle over this way just a little bit? Like in the doorway basically, we put it. There we go, perfect. Yep, perfect. Ms. Kenrdine, if you could also give us your qualifications.
Uh, certainly. I graduated in 1998 from the University of Delaware, the Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I've been working ever since for Edwards Engineering Group, and I got my license to be a professional metering engineer in 2005.
Thank you.
And you testified before boards before?
Yes, I testified before this board previously for the Van De Veer project, and I've testified before a number of boards in New Jersey.
Great.
Thank you. So I am here on behalf of Edwards Engineering Group, just to review the scope of work and to answer a lot of his questions in his report. As Dan said, essentially the project is just to replace the turf carpet on top of the existing synthetic turf field. But as part of that, we're gonna try and address the, there's a drain additional on this sidewalk, where I guess runoff sheds across this, down this slope and just settles along this, this sidewalk, so it causes an icing condition. So essentially, we're going to raise the grade about three feet along the edge of the sidewalk, install modular block retaining wall similar to what's at the Board of Education building, the retaining wall that's around there. And that wall will have behind it an under drain system. So essentially, it can, it can collect the runoff that's currently shedding and collecting along the sidewalk, put into the under drain system, and that under drain system will be connected to an existing inlet in the street. So essentially, what we're doing is just redirecting that runoff, so it doesn't sit on the sidewalk. So I have before me Mr. Cole's letter dated September 8th, and I will briefly go through his comments. Number one, I believe is just informational. Number two is referring to the replacement turf grades. And your assumption is correct that we're essentially just maintaining existing elevations above the field. Our plans essentially call for the carpet and the infill to get taken up, then we're gonna address the, the surface, the finish layer on top of the under drain system, just to, just to grade it, just to make it a smooth grade, and then replace the carpet and the rubber infill that holds the carpet in place. The, um, number three is regarding the stormwater management. I understand that it's a major development only because it was constructed after 2009, or sorry, after 2004. But we're not changing any of the drainage conditions, we're not changing type of concentration, we're replacing any grass up here with like a rubber mulch, which will essentially act the same as the grass. So I don't see any concerns with stormwater management. I don't see any reason that it's warranted for this particular project.
No, I just see the documentation, but I think the solar erosion permit will, will address that.
Yeah, I think so.
I think they have, I think they have authority now for disturbances more than that.
They do. I'm not sure they require any kind of drainage narrative.
I don't, I don't know if they will, but I think that permit, if you can provide that permit when you receive it, that'll address that comment.
Okay, no problem. The, okay, comment number four was about the modular block retaining wall. As I said previously, that wall will have a drainage system behind it with an under drain system, and that under drain will connect to this inlet in the street, so everything will get piped down to that existing system. It, it's not a whole lot of water, because most of the water that falls on the turf field is collected by an extensive under drain system beneath the turf field. So really, the amount of water we're talking about is whatever falls in this strip here. It's, it's not a, it's not a large amount of runoff. And number five, the color style and height of the retaining wall. The wall is gonna be about three feet high, it varies, just so we can hit existing grades along the top of the wall, and then it sort of meshes into the grade along the edges. It's about three feet high. And like I said, it's similar to the style that's currently around the Board of Education building, it's just a, a modular block like a landscaping wall. So I think that addresses all of Mr. Cole's questions. Can I address any questions from the board?
I just have, just a clarification. So the retaining wall, if, if it's three feet high, are kids gonna be able to sit on the top of it?
They might be able to sit on the top of it, but there is a fence behind it, so it's gonna be blocked from people kind of hopping around.
So is the fence behind the wall, or is it on the wall?
No, it's behind the wall.
So this will be a three foot, I'm just thinking that kids hanging out, kind of hanging out there, okay. And will that type of retaining wall take kids kind of using it as a high bench all the time?
Yeah, certainly.
Did you like changing the netting?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thanks for reminding me. The, um, the, the existing ball catcher system, which is like a huge, uh, large pole with a huge net. I believe the existing one is 12 feet high, we're replacing that with one that is 20 feet high. So we're improving that coverage from any balls that might fly over the, over the goals and into this amount of the streets.
So each of those posts is gonna be 20 feet high?
Correct.
Isn't that removable?
Yeah, you can, you can lower it and, and put it up again. How far apart are the poles? About 20 feet apart.
Beth, there's nets on either end, right?
Correct.
Twenty foot ends on both ends.
This is.
Right.
But they're only 12 feet high now, you're pulling up another eight feet.
Correct.
I just think that's a lot of 20 foot poles behind that one, right? Aesthetically. It's like having telephone poles in the backyard or anything.
They, I feel like they blend in better than usually poles. But.
That's Wilmer Street from the east there?
No.
No, this is.
This is, um, Ivanhoe, it's always across the top. Yeah, so there's one on the far right, there's one that's sort of.
There'll be three poles on this side, three poles on that side.
Is there a house right there?
There's a house to the, see where the, the, the kind of, um.
Here?
Now come over, come over and down.
The lounge?
Down. That, that property line right there, there's a house right there.
Yes.
And that's.
Which way does the house face?
The face is onto Ivanhoe, so you're looking at the side of the house there.
Has, has there been an issue with, with a lot of Eric Wold's in the past?
Eric, I'm not sure a lot, but we have.
Would you stop your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Brian Boyd's.
And Brian, you are?
The business administrator for the school this week.
Great, thank you so much.
Because if it hasn't been a problem and there's no real change in the use, it's not the older kids or more professional kids, it's the same student population. If it hasn't been a problem, is the extra height really needed?
Yeah, that's my guess.
Of course, if we stick at 12, all of a sudden, yeah, we have a barrage as well.
And yeah, just, just as a point of interest, we had the, so we worked with the athletic director and his desire was to have the higher roof, because kids were overthrowing the walls from cross and practice and, and games, I guess, not games, from practice, throwing them over the heads, so he, the athletic director.
They were practicing, you throw them over the net, or they're going over?
I hope not to throw them over the head, but during practice, he went over the heads of the athletic director, just wanted a, wanted a higher net, he had, had a reason for, for asking for higher nets.
So balls go over the existing one and towards that house?
I don't know about towards the house, but I don't know if someone said with any frequency, but he did say it does happen, so he had a desire to, to increase size.
To go up then on nine feet.
I mean, if there's, there's balls hitting my fence or helping my house, I think I'd want the higher netting too.
Also don't want a 20 foot pole coming down in a storm on my house either, but.
Oh, they have.
But they're not telling us nothing, are they?
No.
No, there's no.
They're solid, but the, the, the footings for these poles are designed for significant so, and that's a good thing with those.
What is it, 100 miles an hour down south right now?
150.
Guts, guts.
I, I, I'd be inclined to keep it where they are, I mean, then we, then, then we face a wedding, you ask them to put it high, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't.
Has anybody spoken to the homeowner to see if they would mind?
Uh, we haven't today, but we feel we should.
I mean, it would be, if you reach out to them, they go, I don't care if it's 20 foot pole, then this is a rude discussion, but if they, you know, already hate the 12 foot poles in their face every time they walk out, I think a 20 foot pole is gonna exacerbate the situation, so.
Absolutely.
That's the only neighbor you have, you know, the rest of it's on the streets and things, so I don't think it's that big a deal, but.
I wonder how far away.
And the ones on the.
There's a fence along, a regular traditional fence along that side also. It's the same as the other side, there's a fence around the entire.
Yes, there's a fence around and then the poles are set back, sitting over there.
And there's the neighbor on that I, I was.
Yeah, there's one neighbor there.
That's 30 feet away.
From the fence.
From the ball stack. 30 to 40 feet away from the ball stack.
From the property line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
From the property line, not where there's.
That's fast from here to the wall is 30 feet, so.
And the house is set back.
Yeah. It's not, they're not on top of those, that netting.
If it's necessary to go that high, go that high, but if it's not necessary to go that high, that's my only comment. You're going up another eight feet, that's.
I would kind of leave it, and if there's a problem.
Well, that's certainly one of the recommendations we can make, or reach out to the neighbor and see if there's preference, or if you continue dialogue, maybe.
Yeah, I think it's just, it would be nice to reach out to the neighbor.
They might want even more. But then it becomes, then it becomes a real aesthetic problem for the whole neighborhood. Yeah, chat with the one person, maybe, maybe, maybe 15, you know. Why overdo it? And getting back to the question about the wall on the, on the Davenport Street side, I think a, a, a nice note to the upperclassmen who have open lunch, you know, to respect the, you know, the sanctity of the wall in the neighborhood, just don't, they don't have that much time anyway to get to lunch and back. I think a, you know, a reminder that, you know, open lunch is a privilege and, you know.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
My, my seventh period class was always back in time, because I knew, if they were a minute late, they've got closed lunch. It's a, it's a privilege.
I don't mind if they sit on the wall, I just wanna make sure the wall is designed to handle the setting on.
And they, and they conduct themselves appropriately, too, sure. Our kids are responsible, that's, they'll be fine.
Anybody else?
Nope.
How, how long is that field certified, about 10 years? I don't know.
Yeah, it was replaced in 2009, so a few years past its useful life, they're usually about 10 years.
And this has nothing to do with the, with the football field or the baseball field that's in the back that has a separate.
Yeah, it's not really a baseball field in the back, since we put that third turf field.
Right.
So it used to be softball, but we really haven't done that, we really had to abandon that.
Yeah, because it was half the field.
It was.
Okay, so I think if everybody's in agreement, just a recommendation to speak to the neighbor about the 20 foot poles and to double check to make sure 20 foot is, was necessary.
And I would say just that to provide copy and sort of all those permits, so.
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Well, I think, uh, don't you get copying on any permits from the?
I think the CEO does.
Oh, okay.
Not the department, but I, I could check with John Masada, I do believe he does.
I think so.
Yes.
I mean, I always see it at the bottom of this one here, so I think automatically it'll get a copy of that.
Pretty copy of the permit drawn will also be submitted by the contractor that's awarded, full details will add it.
Do we need to vote or anything?
Yeah.
All right, so let's do a vote to make those recommendations. Anybody wanna be?
I'll move.
Second. Deidre Rosensky. Yes. Dennis Sullivan.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Deidre Dare.
Yes.
Art Akins.
Yes.
Jason Craske.
Yes.
Al Keresis.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Thank you, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, stumbling back up to the top. Approval of the bid meeting minutes from 8:10.
I have one change.
You have one change?
I, I'm on the, on the minutes of pending, but I was not.
Okay. Tony, did you hear that?
I'll move with the change of removing from the, uh, from the minutes. We like it all, you know, you're here better.
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Deidre Rosensky.
Yes.
Dennis Sullivan.
I was not here.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, have you a ball.
Nice.
Adrian. Adrian.
Yes.
Jason Craske.
Yes.
And Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, ARB approvals for Verity Chocolate and Boinkin Moo. Boinkin Moo is adding, just adding more to their existing sign, and Verity Chocolate is a new sign. And they, you were sent pictures. If anybody wants to see color copy, I have color copies here.
You should have copies.
Same as one, is that me, you know?
Yeah, they have, yes.
But they were not colored.
Basically, Boinkin Moo is just putting a black band with white letters, and Verity Chocolate is chocolate colored.
Oh.
Check.
I will, I'll move through a bit.
I'll second it. Deidre Rosensky.
Yes.
Dennis Sullivan.
Yes.
Randall Brady.
Yes.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Art Akins.
Yes.
Jason Craske.
Yes.
Al Keresis.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is cottage food operating permits and where it stands with. You sent it to the borough and then it's come back to us?
Well, it was one thing to it, that the mayor pointed out, and I checked the regulations, but I think we discussed it, now we have conclusions, so it's back here that the recommendation was to say it's a rental dwelling that needs to, to inform the landlord or the property owner of the application.
Inform or get approval from?
It was informed.
Maybe it should get approval.
I wish they would get approval.
It's approval and he.
Yeah, because the idea being that the person is, the tenant is really not the one who's gonna take the heat, it's gonna be the owner. And information, I don't necessarily look at it. If I have to approve it, sign off on it, then I am the responsible party to landlord.
Also, more wear and tear on the kitchen or whatever.
Well, you know, I mean.
Of the rental unit, so.
We have, you know, recent buyers have shown us that no matter how good a bed it is, it can happen, and it's a good idea to have the owner aware of what's going on, even she may not approve it for that, may not approve it in his own tendency.
So that would question.
And it might require a modification of the lease too, right?
So I'm look, I'm looking at the minutes from our discussion.
I thought that was required one of the state, that was one of the applications on the state.
That's what I asked to look at.
Okay.
The mayor asked me when he was introduced, I thought the same thing, I went through their application in detail, it's not there.
Okay.
The, the program does not have to sign off on those forms.
Yeah, I mean, let's face it, I get sent a letter saying that my, uh, house on 263 High Street is going to be turned into a, a kitchen, uh, one of these, uh, food colleges, I don't have to respond to it, so maybe I didn't look at it, you know? And if someone comes back at me and says, well, you, you were informed, I don't know if I was informed, and I don't know if we have the responsibility to send it certified or whatever, I think they have to sign off on it, that's part of the application.
The burden this way is on the applicant to make sure their landlord signs the, this sort of document before it comes to us.
Well, he wouldn't come to us.
Andrew, you have a question?
It's not coming to us at all, that's the issue. He doesn't ask the question.
No.
So we say approval, I'm not sure who's enforcing that.
That's what I was gonna.
Borough's not getting any of that.
I, I thought we were on the same page, you guys.
But, no, my question is, if, if I was a rental, a renter, and I wanted to have this business and apply for the, um, food permit, and then I have to go to the, of the owner to get approval, if the owner said no, then that would mean that person couldn't get the permit.
Yes.
You'd be stupid to state permit, but it'd be a violation of this ordinance.
And we talked about possibly having the owner signing a local application. Yes. For the person that's part of.
Yeah, but there's no local application.
That, that's what I was like, who, how, so, so what is, so we're just saying, what we recommended, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're okay with using the state application and we're allowing what they were.
Yes.
Allowed.
Yes.
So, at, my, my understanding was if, if I wanted to do this, I fill out the state application, and I'm basically just noticing the town that we're doing. Because the town's not doing the inspections, we're not doing anything, there isn't a permit, they're not coming in and getting any kind of COs or anything else for it.
Yeah.
So where is, where does this fall in? How are we checking this? How, how are we gonna say if, if, you know, I, I'm a renter and I apply to the state, the state approves it, well, you're gonna get a copy of it over at Borough Hall that I have the state approval.
Are, are they, are you gonna get a copy of it?
No, I don't think we will.
I don't think you will, I don't think you'll know.
We do have an ordinance that requires any rental, uh, that is not, even if it's occupied by someone who lives there, let's say it's a two family house, has to be inspected on a, by, by annual basis. So what happens if I have one of these cookie kitchens in my, there, and the inspector comes along, uh, just to check it out, and it's, it's obviously a violation, because nobody else is gonna look at it.
I don't think, I don't think we have inspections unless it's, unless it's a.
You have to register a single family or multiple family house and pay a fee. If you live there, the fee is waived with the inspection stopped.
I don't think you have, I don't think you get inspection.
Inspector comes and he sees a, a residential kitchen, he's not gonna see that there's a cottage industry.
Here's the only thing though, this regulates the sale, baking and sale, or I mean, you're not gonna have a landlord that's gonna be able to regulate if your hobby is you bake 3,000 cookies a week and you, you know, bring.
Give them out.
You know what I'm saying? Like, so that's, that's the only thing, so, you know, do I think it would be a problem to have the owner sign something? No, I think it's within your right to do it, and you can put that in there, but I don't know if that accomplishes what you may be trying to accomplish.
Because it can still technically.
Sure, almost they tell me, no limit, they can tell me how much I can use my oven if I'm paying for, you know, for electric and gas and whatever else.
Should we require additional insurance?
That's not.
Well, language says that it's site plan and zoning permit exam, so we're not, the borough right now is not seeing it.
You won't see it at all.
Right.
We will have something from the state on the, hanging on the wall saying you're allowed to have.
Well, then we might as well not address it at all, and let the state handle it.
I thought that's what we were pretty much doing originally.
We decided, yes.
It said that the state was kind of.
Well, we, we articulated the state requirements in New York.
Yes.
But if we have no interest or control or whatever, that is, suppose I'm, if I have a, say I'm over at the edge and I decide to do this, well, fine, you know, maybe emanates orders, I don't know, cooking does smell, to me it smells good.
But that's covered in the state then, that's covered in the state of, of ownership, like it, not. The state covered almost every issue, but it was just the rental issue whether the owner of the rental property should know.
They couldn't have extra standards, you couldn't have extra use of utilities.
Yeah, have a bigger van, so I think, um.
I, the, the only thing about that change, I just don't know how we, how we're overseeing that.
Yeah.
Because we don't have an application, we don't have anything, so unless we're telling the borough to create our own application for it after getting the state approval, I don't know how we're, as the town, are overseeing.
So when you're applying to the state, you don't, the owner of the, the property doesn't, there's no signature anywhere on there?
That's correct, it's not, that's the contract.
Maybe that's an oversight.
That surprises me.
That's crazy.
But I wonder how the town's handling.
I think they're just ignoring it and just putting in the files.
News lettering here? From my understanding from the news articles, again, just taking it from the news articles, is that they just say they don't know if the state allows it, they allow it.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I think Heather, Luca, I think you can look some of them on, I think there's four or eight already approved, so I don't know. If you don't look it up, I don't think the borough gets a copy of this.
Yeah, I think it's a state thing and we just have to have it, just operate it in our.
Is it up to the landlord to enforce it via the lease contract?
But if you don't, the landlord won't know they're doing it either.
But, good, good point, but upon renewal, landlord should be drafting that in there, that if you are doing this, right?
To protect themselves, I would do that, because there's more wear and tear on the.
So maybe it's, yeah, but the, I guess the landlord would have to be educated on the topic.
Yeah, you would have to make a suggestion to the landlords that, that there is now this.
So maybe the borough doesn't play a role in that.
It's not the state's of, owner. Okay, it's, it's landlord's of, okay, it's wear and tear there. I mean, I'm trying to look at it, I am a landlord. I mean, I'm trying to look at it, I am a landlord, I want to get out of it right now. But, I mean, I just think that if someone's using my appliances, my kitchen, my space, for essentially a business, it's got, puts different wear and tear on that building and the property than if I have a little old lady who cooks once a month for our grandkids.
Right. I think what Chris is saying is you as a landlord can stipulate in the lease agreement.
Oh, hit it, yeah.
You can prohibit any cottage industries.
But that's only if I have any awareness of, at all.
So this is, so this is like an information campaign? Which is needed more than anything else. Yeah.
Not by us.
You're kind of wondering, like, it's not just the wear and tear on the building, it's, you have one person living there, you're, that's what you're comfortable with. Now you have people going in and out, risk of lawsuits go out, broken leg, someone got sick from a cookie, right? Who's, who's going to court on that one out?
The old people have to.
Home down with the party.
Yeah, I think that's the state.
If the owner's not aware that if something happens to the property or people on that property, the owner would have to take.
We don't have an ordinance.
We don't have, we don't have a say.
We don't have an ordinance saying that if you're a renter, you can't have a party with more than twenty people at your house without notifying your landlord either. You know, it's, it's, to the, to the, I, I don't want to get overbearing in the ordinance that we're taking on the responsibility of saying what they're allowed and not allowed to do.
No, I think Chris is right. It's more of an information campaign to the landlords that when they write their leases.
To Grant's point, it's not us to do that.
No, no, it's not on us to do that, but it's on the landlords to know that this is a possibility in their properties now. Just like you write no pets, no dogs, or whatever, no cottage industries.
Sixty-five percent of our housing units in this town are rental. They're on the run.
Yeah, well, they probably, they have people who can.
I guess, when I'm here and then come to Jeremy tomorrow and have that stipulation removed.
I'll have the whole ordinance removed.
Well, do we care? Do we?
No, we need to have it.
We need to have the ordinance, because right now it's prohibited.
Yeah.
We have to have it in there so it's allowed.
I think it's, it's twelve or thirteen.
We have to, because right now it's prohibited, and that's the issue.
Andrew talked about his insurance. Because I mentioned this to a couple of people on the ground, and the first thing they went, that, will they have to have insurance?
That's out of our property. That's nothing we can force and nothing we can.
But as a landlord, am I really risking my tenancy, my property?
We have to ask the government.
That there isn't insurance, because suppose something happens and that business is in my tenancy? And my insurance company, who is the landlord, has no idea that this exists.
Right.
All of a sudden there's a fire because the stove can't handle that, okay? It does happen, guys, stove burns. What happens then? So they cancel my insurance. I have no idea that you've got this going on in that, in my tenancy.
So I think, I think the state needs to rectify their application.
We can't even make a law that says if you're attacked, you have to have insurance.
We have no way to enforce it. We don't know they're applying for the license.
That covers just.
We don't know.
Unless you look up, you can go online and look it up on a regular basis.
That they usually, that's, you know who has Sutton's approved, you don't know who's applying.
Or who's using it.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
The state could change that.
The state, I think, I think the state needs to go back and tweak this a little bit so it protects the landlords, right now. But for us, as a borough, we just got to let it go with state.
I think the ordinance is good.
Yeah. So we need to.
Then we can just leave it out. The recommendation is don't put in form or approval on the property owner, just be silent.
Let it run like the state, if the state changes it, then the state changes it.
Basically say, make a state.
I have another thought. Now, those cottages have, cottage industries, that has to be, we have to get a copy of we're notified as a borough on this at all.
Not at all.
We have no, we have no, there's no listing of who, who has.
I think it's online.
Online to see who has them, yes.
But there's nothing that's.
I don't think there's a borough's copy of these with permits.
Because there's no permits, because they're waiting for everything.
Well, for.
They don't have to.
For law, the state issues.
Correct. But there's nothing from the town.
But I don't think the state copies the borough.
They should. I mean, it's just so easy to rectify, just happen once they approve, they'll send a copy.
I think the whole program needs to be tweaked so it is a little bit fairer to landlords and communicates better to the towns. But for now.
Well, for the least, I think we should put something out that says, these are in existence. As landlords, you may wish to double-check to see if your tenancy happens to have one in it.
That's got to be the borough.
At most release, having, having none.
Yeah.
But we have passed this regulation, the state doesn't require it, the town doesn't require it, but landlords may wish to check periodically to see if the people in there have this, so they'll wear it. I mean, it just makes sense. I mean, again.
Can we make a, a recommendation in the, in the.
No, we can't make a recommendation to the state, that's a whole nother.
No, not to the state, but to the people that apply for this in town.
They don't.
They don't apply to it.
Apply in town, I understand, but we're, we're creating some sort of document here or some sort of.
Well, our ordinance is, that is going to vary with the state.
Basically, right now it's prohibited, so in order to align with the state, we've taken the state regs and we've put them into our ordinance.
How about if we just make a recommendation that they notify the landlord if this is going on?
Who's they?
Whoever.
Then they won't know, because it won't be attached to the state.
I got that.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just trying, I'm trying to split the middle.
I mean, it could, it could, if you want to do notification to the landlord, if you want to wear as paragraphs, you know, landlords are encouraged to. So you're grabbing the ordinance if you're adopting a state.
Because quite honestly.
Yeah, but I, I don't think landlords are going to read this, that's.
But sooner or later, the people who attacks us, which are, who attacked us, okay, is that going to affect the taxes of that tenancy?
Well, you're asking the wrong.
How are they going to know? Because nobody knows.
Well. Be careful circle. If you don't, if you don't get notified from the state, nobody knows, so how are they going to get a.
It's not like you're going to walk in and there's going to, it's just the nature of the place.
Under what, under twenty thousand dollars in sales?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. That, that's what the law says. I'll just, I'll just tell you what it says in there.
I think either the borough regulates this and part of the zoning permit goes through this, or you leave the law.
Yeah, and I think we just have to leave it alone and hope that the state starts to tweak it a little bit as it goes on forward, and landlords start calling to the governor and screaming at him.
I think this is going to have to be on, at the ECA.
Yeah, maybe announce it, council it, put it on the website.
Yeah, I mean, you can definitely announce it.
Once we, once we. We can, but, you know, let the property owners know. And they have to redo their leases as they come due for renewal. And add a clause that, you know, commercial activity, you know, will be allowed.
No, 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 no.
Careful there. You don't want to alienate the tenants.
Yes, no, 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 you don't want to do that.
Because FYI, this law is going to affect.
The paraphrase are a fearless leader. If anyone believes the state is doing anything right, perhaps it is not your state.
All right, so I think we're going to be back to just keeping it.
Carrie, go to Jeremy and.
As we say, do we need to vote on this, or it's just a recommendation?
I think.
I don't know how I would.
Karen, do we need to vote on this, or is it just a recommendation?
Recommendation.
I would still vote on the recommendation.
I'm not even sure a recommendation on both of them.
Just taking out the.
We're removing the clause that I had my put in.
Yes.
Out of, out of good intent, but it's obviously.
There's no way to enforce it.
I think it's great, and it was written that up in the state.
I have no intention of. Yeah, it's, it's up for public hearing and.
All right, so can I have a motion to remove what Dennis put in?
Remove the addition that Dennis put in from the original, we're making the recommendations over our original that we said.
Yes.
Our original vaccination statement.
I second that.
That's not binding, guys.
Correct. It's just a recommendation to the.
Yes.
Okay, go for a vote. Pedro Sensi. Yes. Ben Sol.
Yes.
Randall Brady.
I'm staying.
Andrew Dyer.
Yes.
Art Akins.
Yes.
Jason Craska.
Yes.
Al Perez.
Yes.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Mayor, do you vote yes?
I voted yes.
I, I, I could, I could vote. Well, I might.
Okay. Items not on the agenda.
No, we don't.
Oh, I'm probably skipping the warehouse, sorry. Bridgewater Township Warehouse, is that another courtesy type?
We have a regional sort of notice.
Yes.
It's technically a manufacturing property, but it's got forty-four truck bays, it's not a warehouse, but.
Yeah, because it doesn't, it says they don't know what's going to be made in.
They don't, they don't own tenanted, they don't know who the tenant is.
Two hundred and seventy parts.
Surely forty-four truck bays.
That's a, that's a warehouse.
That's a lot of trucks.
It's set up a warehouse.
That's going now.
That's Amazon.
I can tell you how many there is on.
Now, it's up next to the Audi, that dealership, right north.
Yeah.
So.
There are a lot of trucks.
The challenge is if you're northbound, United Commons Way and the stop sign, it's a problem if you're northbound.
But it's all Bridgewater's problem, for the first time ever.
You've seen that now?
They didn't notice on our border.
That was my opinion, that I don't think it directly impacts Somerville, but it's right on the board.
The only thing I would concern myself with is the amount of runoff that would come up of a site that's paved. Like, we always get dumped on, I mean, literally, Bridgewater runs into Somerville.
Most of that's already paved though, isn't it?
Yes, it's a.
It's already, it's a huge park, it's already running off.
So it's a huge parking lot.
Twelve studios in parking lots.
They probably have twelve hundred parking spaces.
All right, so maybe they'll have to deal with the runoff better if they're redoing it.
Yeah, they're redoing it. I, I don't think the, the improvement coverage increasing, is increasing.
But they'll have to meet stormwater regs, they'll have to meet new stormwater regs.
They have stormwater regs, they have disturbance, and it's going to be a big rectangle where manufacturer and you get the tenant, there's no, there's no floor plans, it's just a shell.
It's a Butlerville lake with dock, with floating docks.
Forty feet tall, it's just like what you would think a warehouse would be. With one side, the west side, has all the truck bays, the forty-four bays. Yeah, so it's, it's set up, I guess you could say for multi.
I don't think Somerville, well, I don't think Somerville has a, I mean, it's not really affected.
Do you know when they're presenting?
I do not know that. We have another one coming up that is when we talked about a few months ago, that's back on. And that's the Mack property, that's the one on Twenty-two, that's directly going to have it tonight.
That one would be something around town.
They're on, and they're coming, that's going to the zoning board in Bridgewater on December sixth.
Have we done the street work?
Yes. Yes, the ordinances prevent trucks from over four thousand pounds from traversing the streets between Union Avenue and Twenty-two.
Yeah, that's Gaston Grove Bridge.
Bridge Street, okay, bridge all the way from two oh six.
We're about Davenport, Davenport can't handle it.
I'm sorry, Davenport. And Mercer.
Now, I did talk this to Scarlett Doyle at LEM, and she had questions to me that I wasn't thinking as, I'd say back to the planning board. Are we going to be providing testimony there? Is Karen going to be there? Am I going to be there? From a practical, we're going to have a table for us, and she's encouraging, you know, obviously we feel it's impacting the borough, which I strongly feel.
Oh, absolutely.
That we have to be there. She reminded me, which we all know, that we can write all as we want, but if you're not there, you can't present it. We know this.
Right.
So we can do a great recommendation from council, from the planning board, but that's not really something that's admissible, it's in the package, but.
So we have to be there December sixth?
We have to be there to get a presentation.
Okay.
It's December sixth.
So who, you want the, so the whole board, you want just, like, what do you recommend? I've never done one of these sort of representing the town, I don't mean.
The more the merrier, maybe.
I agree with this. You said, well, the residents, the wards, council.
All right, so have a lot of.
The more the merrier, as you said. And, you know, the question is, are we going to be providing testimony on this? We don't have to even answer, I'm just throwing out, that I said I would take it back to the board. Obviously, it's a big, the, rather, thick application, and.
Do we have a copy of the traffic study?
We have a copy of the traffic. I put an email to Scarlett saying that please copy us on all correspondence, being the planning board.
And let's send that picture that you circulated to Staples and you get the size of a wall.
The one that, the one that. Yeah, what you're talking about. Click. Tell you what's on our agenda for our next meeting.
Your next meeting?
So.
The solar application from the landfill, that's October twelfth.
Mike, could you get us a copy of the traffic study?
Yeah, I have a copy of that.
Do you know if that traffic study included the prohibition of traffic on our local roads?
I don't think it did. Dr. Liffey certainly looked at that. It's, the study was basically saying, it's going to have less traffic because the car count goes down.
That is not true. That's just not true.
Nonsense.
Well.
Nonsense, I'm saying something stronger. What we're on TV, so.
Traffic because the truck count goes down.
What they're saying is they're replacing three hundred and sixty thousand square feet of offices with two warehouses. So they're saying the employees are less.
Yes, but you're going to have vans.
I get it, I get it, but they're saying.
As opposed to an employee going and working, you know, and leaving.
These are the employees who work from home now, because of COVID, they just work from home.
But even the little smaller Amazon vans, they're going to be coming in like little beehives. There's going to be more in and out traffic than there ever was when people used to come in, art, work, and eat.
Let's see, let's see what their, what their numbers show.
Yeah, I think we, I think we look at it.
But they're not bad.
I can't, I can't.
I'm sure they'll be in their favor.
Um, I think, I think if you can get us that, we put a recommendation together, we, you know, have somebody, you know, we can talk at the next meeting, who wants to be the presenter out of it, whether, if you guys do the presentation for us, and we're all there to speak.
And make as many.
Because we can only speak as individuals at the meeting as well, besides whoever's presenting.
Now, I will just say, looking at it from an objector standpoint, not municipality, but if, if this is something that's, you want to protect yourself, you want to prepare for a potential appeal, what the courts are ultimately going to look at, and the board has to look at, is the moracity of the experts that the applicant presents, and whether there's any testimony that contradicts that. So you may not like it, you may believe that it is going to create these problems, but without your own traffic engineer that does a study that contradicts theirs, the board has no choice but to take the information. As you know, when you sit here every day, you know, what they said.
But, but you said that the traffic study that they're presenting does not take into account the action that our, our councils are taking, so they made a, they might have wrote that traffic study in May, and on September first, they changed the four miles per hour restrictions for weight limits that they don't account for in their original. So maybe they should be told, hey, you know, about this.
And I agree with that, but we don't.
I think we could say maybe we get a traffic study done.
That's kind of where I'm going, number one. Number two, what we have to see when we get the traffic study, what it says, but I wouldn't be surprised if their prediction is that nothing makes someone who was even going to be touched. Which we all know to be not, no, forget that, but that their prediction is.
The thing, the other arteries can handle everything.
Exactly, which we all know is not true.
That's, that's physically impossible. You can't get there without going through.
Yeah, but they're just looking at, they're just looking at the fact that there is a possibility that Somerville, that you don't have to go through Somerville, therefore they don't have to go through Somerville.
And Bridgewater only has the jurisdiction to look at the area within its sound. And Bridgewater only has jurisdiction to look at the area within its town.
So, therefore, we have to make the pitch that this warehouse will harm Bridgewater far more than Somerville, because Somerville has protected itself from this traffic.
I like that.
So, therefore, you see, we need a plan, it can't just be really.
No, 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 we can have a plan.
And we got five cars, three trucks. The sense being, well, you know, we, we didn't really do this against you guys, we just thought having huge trucks on our roads twenty-four hours a day is probably not a good idea. Anyway, how do you feel about Bridgewater people? Do you feel having huge trucks on your road twenty-four hours a day is good for your town and your real estate and your values? Because we've protected ourselves. So, I really think the way we, we handle it, because a traffic study, we all know, having sat here years in it, we can do a traffic study on Lot A, but Lot B isn't looked at, so nobody cares. We simply say, we have protected ourselves. Now, they can believe it, they could try to sue it, they could try to reverse it, whatever they wanna do, but the bottom line is, we have now cut you guys out of the equation, so now it's gonna affect Bridgewater.
Wasn't the, wasn't the way the trucks were gonna turn around was to go over one of the overpasses and do a U-turn?
That can't handle the traffic.
Well, that's the thing, yeah, if you go down by the ball field, right, get off there, and then that was the issue on Union. We, which we didn't want to turn, but Larry took the brush off.
Well, that's, that was Gaston Avenue.
Yeah.
So. Adamsville Road is already restricted.
Yes.
Right, for waiting in Bridgewater.
That's correct.
That's Bridgewater, Adamsville Road from twenty-two, that's actually Bridgewater. When you come down, it's still Bridgewater until you get past the doctor's offices, and then when you get past the kinder care, then the first property on the right is Vanderbilt School. That's where some of those start, on the right side of the road, going west.
So, how would a truck coming on the other side of twenty-two?
Coming from where?
You'd have to, if you're coming from.
The other side of twenty-two, so heading west on twenty-two.
You're east, and you're heading west of this facility, you're gonna have to do a jug handle, you.
Where?
On twenty-two somewhere.
That's what I'm saying, where would that, because most of the jug handles can't accommodate those.
The, the one that can is in Bridgewater at Somerset Court Bridge seven, so that's after you cross under, under two oh two, two oh six.
That's fine then.
The first traffic, and then you make the U-turn there and then drive back.
There is another way they can do it. What they can do is take Union Avenue, and that turns into Gaston Avenue.
William, William Street.
You make a right turn onto Main Street, go through town, and you can pick up Mountain Avenue and go down Mountain Avenue.
I thought they couldn't go on Gaston though? How are they gonna get, how are they gonna get?
Only Gaston, only Gaston from Union to twenty-two, one more state highway. Other Gaston is State Highway. So, in order for us to make that, oh yeah, we have to make a pitch to the state that this is a problem for them as well.
So, we're gonna have them coming down Main?
They're not gonna make the U-turn over on twenty-two, they're gonna chug along twenty-four hours a day up Union Avenue, left on the Gaston, right on the Main, right through downtown Somerville.
To the circle.
Where they're just gonna.
You're right on that.
Hopefully, you know.
They go up to the circle.
Why, they can, we can restrict Mountain.
Yeah, we can.
Will we restrict Mountain?
No, we can't, it's county.
Well, we can ask the county to restrict it.
Good luck as well.
We have batches.
We can ask the county to restrict it, plus there's a school on Mountain Avenue, there's two schools, Immaculate Conception School and Immaculata High School. Do we have to hit the safety factor we have to hit? The way they would have to do it is to go right through one of the biggest, best towns in the state.
So, we're back to the argument though, that it's not hurting Bridgewater, and so, but it might hurt the.
The good, the good thing is in the use variance, so that's why it's from the zoning board, so the thresholds are much higher. The D, the D variance, okay, it's not C variances, so.
Even in Bridgewater?
Yes.
It's five positive votes.
And the more.
Five positive, five out of seven.
Yeah, and the more restrictions that we could put on travel through this town, the more it's gonna impact the potential. And they're getting worried about tenants, what tenant are we gonna get that's gonna have this difficult time building this?
We then would have to pressure the state to make twenty-eight veterans of more than that drive.
I mean, for, for sake of argument, I think, you know, it's.
It's a way to do it.
We're still waiting to trucks right past Vanderbilt and everything.
Correct.
Constantly, but just so dangerous, yeah.
Well, again.
And that intersection, they have to turn, it's not about that intersection.
So, we have to tell them, because when they have to go past Adamsville School, that's gonna be just as dangerous.
The Gaston Avenue intersection is pretty tight, I don't know.
Let me reach out to Scarlett and find out what Bridgewater's doing in House Call or consult.
Okay.
I, we understand that we have a copy of the traffic study, which I will get from the applicant, but I'll find out from Scarlett what Bridgewater's doing, both internally and externally, in anything.
Cause I would also say.
Well, we take all this information back and have a next meeting.
So, next meeting, we can have another discussion about this.
We have to have a plan.
One other, one other thing just to think about, you know, if we're gonna be, just because it is December sixth, um, you know, when we're presenting, maybe we've already sent a letter to the state and the county. So, when we're presenting, we said we've also requested that the state and the county come in, you know, so we can say we've already, Somerville submitted, you know, true those, for those other roads, even though we may not think it's gonna get anywhere.
Now, we have to approve the proposals.
They're gonna look at it and see they have your section, but it's on the state highway.
I, I have a, a question.
But the trucks are gonna come with that kind of.
Well, no, not necessarily, because looking at a map, there's one street that they can decide to cut through from Union Avenue to the back door of this warehouse area, it's called Woodside Lane.
I agree.
I'm just saying that if they wanna do this, they come down Union Avenue, that's still Bridgewater. No, it does it now, but it will when the warehouse is there, and they decide they wanna approve this, show the street we go through. If they wanna do this so bad, put it on their street, if they're so confident they're not having a traffic problem.
There's a lot of houses on that street.
Again, there's a lot of houses on Mountain Avenue.
And it's allowed?
That's high priority now, it doesn't even have sidewalks, right?
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that they're, they're showing it down our road. Well, if they're that serious about doing this, and it's not gonna affect anybody, well, then prove it, you.
Put it on a Bridgewater street.
Down there by the Eagles.
The Eagles.
Yeah, that, exactly, well, that's, you know, our streets are also have a lot of houses and schools. If they wanna do this, they can take the restriction off of, off of Adamsville Road.
I still think a semi can't turn.
Can't turn.
We can't turn.
They also can't see time, Gaston, Mercer, and they're on GT, so, so, that, that's, that's, that's my argument that they can take a couple of houses.
Yeah, that's, that's.
They're gonna, they're gonna.
Alright, so I think, I think what where we are.
Oh, of course, but that's the whole point, to make it around.
I think where we are is Michael's gonna go gather more data, and at our next meeting, if we don't have too much on the docket, which it doesn't seem like we do, we can discuss a plan of what points we want to make and who will do the presentation, and that way we can.
Right forward. How does?
And I was trying to get the board plans.
Just, yeah, yes.
See this, right?
Agreed. So, ju- just so we can think about it from now on, what is the process, like, if we wanted you guys to go and present on behalf of?
As our experts.
Is it, as the planning board of Somerville, some of those planning board's experts, is that how?
Would be representing the planning board, some of those.
Yeah, if you're representing some of it.
We have enough table.
As part of. You just file a formal, file a letter as a formal objector of the application, which then means.
As part of the regional center, which is why we're not just the person.
Correct, which would then mean not only will we have the ability to comment, but we would have the ability to essentially put on our rebuttal.
So, I guess, I guess the right question is just in the timeline thing, does this has to be, does that have to be approved by council at a meeting or anything like that, I, I've never seen us do this before. So, I'm just thinking time wise, if we need it on an agenda and we have to send it.
In eighteen years, I've never seen a whole something.
Me neither.
Rose to adversely impact the borough, so what you're saying, Jason, we've never done this in eighteen years. The question is, does the council, does the council want the joint representation or separate?
Well, I just think.
We have authority to send, you know.
We have authority to planning board.
To send to the town. We, we have governing bodies here, we have the council, and we have the governing body, the count, we have the borough council, and we have the planning board, I think both should be represented, because I, I don't want this to be watered down, you know, this, this isn't gonna be like instant coffee, we'll argue them before.
And we need a traffic engineer, we've really gotta think out where that's coming from, because that they, they're expert, and I know you said the township, and we can see what they're doing too, but presumably.
We need our own experts.
We need our, because we don't.
So, we need some, so who approves the monies? So, I know the planning board has to approve monies, like extra monies if we're telling Mike and Kara to do something.
That's kinda what we're doing, dude, I don't know what authority you.
As opposed to the council approving monies to have.
Well, whose budget to get.
Exactly, so that's the big question, is whose budget is gonna matter?
I don't believe that the planning board has spent all its budget.
We haven't, I don't think.
It's not with you guys, you know, I do, because I get.
I think Mike just told you.
I mean, we can, we can split it too.
Well, let me tell you, I think we have fifty grand in there, but, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know.
Cause the traffic study's gonna cost us.
The planning board has spent fifty-two hundred and eighty-five dollars from your activities. On escrow, engineering escrow, we've spent sixty-nine, this is September version, sixty-nine seventy-five, and our redevelopment, we've got forty-one eighty-five total, which includes the planning board, engineering, escrow, redevelopment, and other, which is the railroad, I will act in it. That's about sixteen grand, so there is some funding there. We need to know who we're gonna get, how much it's gonna cost, what, what, tell me?
We don't charge to those accounts.
No.
That you just mentioned.
You didn't.
No, no, we don't charge to those accounts.
If you're going to prove this, it'll come out of the planning board escrow, right, the accounts.
How much is in the escrow?
Um, I have no idea.
Alright, so for the next meeting, for the next meeting, to make a use of.
I mean, I, I think we could know, who we think we're gonna get, and how much it would cost, what the extent of the study is. The study would have to look at what their experts have done.
Right.
As a rebuttal.
But the problem is, December sixth is not that far away.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're not gonna have them set up roadblocks, we're gonna have to do some of the information they've already given us.
If Bridgewater does the traffic city, and we're comfortable with it.
No, we don't need to.
In my opinion, if we're comfortable with it, we can use that. What I'm saying is just get all the facts, and then, once we have all the facts, I mean, the council and the planning board can make an informed decision on how to proceed. What is Bridgewater exactly doing, what are they presenting, what is the applicant, I can get the applicant, get copies of the maps, so everybody has a map to see what's going on here, and we can look at all the residents, we can make it edit.
Yeah, right, and see what.
So, I would, and one thing I would suggest we do right away is submit the letter of objection, is that what you, what was Kara, what was the letter?
Yeah, register as a formal objector.
Yeah, so I think we should, we might as well do that right away, just so we know that they'll, we can be on the meetings, so I know what the deadline for all that kind of like is.
Would they want the council to do the same?
Sure, might as well, you don't have to proceed on it.
Email somebody. Jerry, talk to Jeremy tomorrow, talk to Jeremy, and we'll get it down the agenda as a formal objection, because we need publicity on this as well. These guys, that little guy isn't gonna give us all the publicity, standing there with his little red light. The sixteen people who are looking at the borough council meeting, they may give us.
And, and most of the public that would be affected, with the exception of a handful of residents along the twenty-two corridor there in Bridgewater, to the south of this project, most of the affected people would be Somerville residents.
Yes.
There's very few individual homes that are but this site on the south, very few.
No, it's the trucks coming through Main Street.
Few on Monroe Street, there'd be a couple on Monroe, a couple on Jackson.
It's really the truck traffic that.
Did you take any action formally today for any of that?
So, do we have to vote to have you submit the letter?
I mean, that, that.
Let's have it in the record, I think we should.
I think we should, because then that would also authorize payment, you know, from the general, what you call, general planning board escrow.
So, we need to move to have Kara submit, what is, tell me the.
Prepare a letter registering the planning board as a formal objector on the application, which are gonna send me the information, so I know which one that is. And then.
And for us to put a package together, put a package.
And requesting the borough council follow us through.
Yes.
I'll do that then.
So, move.
I'll second it.
Well, that goes without saying.
Alright, so, everybody heard that? Deidre's in too.
Yes, Cecil.
Yes.
Randall Brady.
Yes.
Andrea Lee.
Yes.
Harvey Akers.
Yes.
Jason Presser.
Yes.
Alcarresis.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Chris Rattick.
Yes.
Why don't they put the warehouse up on two oh six?
Next to the other one.
By the way, guys, if you go over any of those buildings, I have a physician over there, and I might get into the building and I say hi, it echoes, because most of those buildings don't have a lot of tenants, okay? So, if they think that they've got thirty-three thousand people parking a car over there, they have thirty-three people parking a car over there.
Yep.
Um, well, these traffic studies should have done a count of actual cars, so that's your choice.
Yeah, but that, that count is skewed, because we're doing a count when we're works from home and COVID and people.
That's, that's okay, that's alright, because we can say that.
Look, I'll review the study, I'll give you guys a summary of what the traffic report says.
When you talk to these guys, tell them apartments sell, apartments are great, take a look at Somerville. Then take a look at Bridgewater Apartments, and see which one you'd rather have in your town.
Okay. The biggest problem you're getting with these warehouses is that they are like the other one we just talked about, which is you wanna build a box, but you don't know who's gonna come to it. So, to have a realistic traffic report during COVID with everything else, with levels of service, with a tenant that you have no idea what that traffic generation is.
That's true, we used to have warehouse districts, like the one in Bridgewater, and now they're putting them up here, which is a problem.
Kara, I remember when Governor Whitton used her influence to restrict traffic on Route thirty-one. I remember when the mayor of Piscataway made sure that there's no more big trucks on River Road, they have to divert. I wonder if there's any way that we can look at that kind of thing, maybe not openly, but maybe even regional. We have this regional center partnership, maybe we should start to look at traffic mitigation in the regional center and keeping some of these trucks off the road, not twenty-four seven, but maybe during certain hours.
Or keeping them to our highways and not on the highways, as they say.
Specifically Route twenty-eight, especially Route twenty-eight.
Okay, I'm just gonna open up the meeting to the public, if nothing from the public, I will close the public portion of the meeting.
I have one comment before we end.